The time is not six thirty. I'm calling this session of the Ridgefield City Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilor Wells.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me be seated, and Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Favela, here. Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Burkle.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chipman.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here. Okay. Ms. Notenares, is there any late changes to the agenda tonight?
Uh, no late changes tonight.
Okay, that sounds good. We will go ahead and move forward with public comment. And anyone wishing to address City Council regarding items not subject to a specific, to a specific public hearing may come forward and do so at this time to the podium or use the raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six to mute or unmute. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody in the room tonight wishing to give public comment?
Hi, I'm Steve Thalberg. I'd like to talk about the I five exit eleven south connector towards Ridgefield. And I sent some documents to be seen. And last time, I just want to reiterate, I'm going to keep on coming back to try and make a point, but I had this map. I think you've seen it. All the red dots are as everyone who signed the petition. The ones that do not have a dot, they're the ones who declined to sign it. So overall, about ninety-five percent of the people in the lots in this areas that are south of the urban growth boundary and to the west of Kennedy Farms signed it. And I visited ninety-five percent, and about ninety-five percent of them voted in favor of our petition. The blue route, let me back up, for the project area on, in your transportation improvement plan shows this map, and it shows the project area. I'd like to extend it both to the west and to the south because those lots are significantly involved, and they are outside your urban growth boundary. Most of them are outside the urban growth boundary and don't even know about the Ridgefield Roundtable. They don't even know that that's a place to go to access for information. So again, when you give the contract to the group doing evaluation of the different routes, I would hope that they reach out more than just to the Ridgefield Roundtable, which is what happened last time. And that was a big deficit. I have this, again, this page is old, old numbers. It's from about two thousand eighteen or nineteen or so. And if you look at it, blue route to purple route to Cardi Road is about twice as expensive than any of the other routes, but that's because it includes the Cardi Road Improvement Program. And if you, your long-term plans are to improve Cardi Road, and so if you do that as well as throw this in, it'd still be a savings of ten to twenty-five million dollars over any other plan with Cardi Road Improvement. Did I include in there a map of the urban growth, or the zoning? No, I didn't. But I did have this map here. It's a little bit different than the one that I submitted last time, and again, modified the blue route so that it interferes less with the historic buildings and encroaches a little bit less on lots.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Thalberg.
Okay. One, one last thing to close. I would hope that I could be part of the liaison for the neighborhoods on that committee that's evaluating it, because I think it would, I would work better working with the group rather than as an antagonist from the outside trying to destroy your plans after the fact. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the room wishing to give public comment this evening? Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, we will go ahead and close public comment and move to the consent agenda, Council. How to accept the motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Council is in a discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove the approval of Resolution six six eight and defer for another meeting.
Move, so move Resolution six six eight, the comprehensive solid waste management plan
Yes.
to a different, out of consent and into a different meeting?
Correct.
That would require, is that a motion?
Be amended.
Yeah, it's.
Amended.
Amended.
Yep, amended, yeah. So it must be seconded, though, so.
I'll second that.
Okay. So there's amendment that must be moved and seconded, or there's amendment to?
Approve the consent agenda
Yes.
with removing the approval of Resolution and defer for another meeting.
Okay, has been moved and seconded. I guess we have to vote on the amendment first. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the amendment carries. So now we return to the main motion. So then now the motion is?
To approve.
To approve the consent agenda, but defer
As amended.
Resolution number six six eight to a separate meeting.
As amended, yeah.
As amended, yep, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. We'll move on with our meeting. We have a presentation tonight. This is the Clark County Commission on Aging. This is our annual presentation. Mr. Green, we'll turn it over to you and then turn it over to our guest after that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have the privilege and honor of introducing this topic. Me, it seemed weird why the Director Public Works guy is introducing Commission on Aging. For those who aren't aware, I spent five years on this commission. And last year, the, the group won a Governor's Award for the Aging Readiness Plan Update. One of the new chapters in the Aging Readiness Plan Update is what we're going to be hearing about tonight is the emergency preparedness, because there's been a few emergencies in the last few years. So we have Ken Lund and Ellen Rogers from the Commission, and I'm just going to turn it over to whoever goes first. Ellen.
There's room for two.
Okay, good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. I'm Ellen Rogers. I am the interim chair for the Clark County Commission on Aging, also known as COA. The COA is entering its second decade of providing leadership. Oh, wait, yep, you have our presentation. So, sorry. Developing community awareness and guiding positive change toward an all-age-friendly, livable community. We are pleased to be here to share a brief annual update with you today. Okay, so the purpose of this work session is to update the City Council on the Commission on Aging's work in two thousand twenty-four. This evening, we will be sharing some background information about the Commission on Aging, giving you a high-level overview of the Aging Readiness Plan, or the ARP, providing an outline of the Commission's two thousand twenty-four focus on emergency preparedness, acquaint you with the two thousand twenty-four Silver Citizen Award winners, and share a summary of a few additional Commission achievements in two thousand twenty-four. Next slide. Okay, so to start off, we will be giving you some background on the Commission and review the work completed by the Commission in two thousand twenty-four. Okay, Clark County, as everywhere in the country, is anticipating a surge in the number of residents sixty or better. By two thousand thirty-five, one in four Clark County residents will be age sixty or older. With the knowledge of this upcoming change, or this coming change, the County Council approved the original Aging Readiness Plan in two thousand twelve and informed the nine-member Volunteer Commission on Aging. The Commission's plan, or the Commission's charge, is to provide leadership in addressing the special needs of an aging population, to manage and assist with the implementation of the county's Aging Readiness Plan, and to update the plan as it needs change, as needs change. Next slide, okay. The Aging Readiness Plan is a long-range planning document that assesses the county's readiness to serve as a home for a growing number of older residents. The recommendations in the ARP focus on topics such as missing or lacking public infrastructure, support for social services, and zoning and planning standards that encourage an age-friendly community that older adults can thrive in. The ten-year update of the ARP was adopted in, by County Council in September two thousand twenty-three. To ensure that the plan reflected the community's needs, public engagement was a focus of the update of the ARP. It centered on what makes Clark County an age-friendly place and what opportunities and hurdles there are for making improvements. Engagement activities included a survey of older adults, focus group meetings with service providers and agencies, online input opportunities, and three public workshops to evaluate existing strategies, brainstorm ideas for new strategies, and prioritize the strategies for improvements in the community. Next slide. The Commission was honored to learn that the updated plan was awarded a two thousand twenty-four Governor's Smart Communities Award from the Washington State Department of Commerce. The Governor's Smart Communities Award highlights effective implementation of the state's Growth Management Act and other local or regional planning procedures. The plan received the Judge's Mayor Award, which recognizes success in more than one judged category. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to hand it over to Ken Lund, who is a fellow Commissioner on the Commission on Aging.
Hi there, I'm Ken Lund, and I'll be presenting the next seventy-five slides. Before I get going, there's two, two statistics I'd like you to keep in the back of your mind. One Ellen already mentioned, which is by two thousand thirty-five, one in four citizens in Clark County are projected to be sixty-plus. And if you actually look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics numbers on that and escalate it based on the last five to seven years, we hit that number five years earlier than that. So that's an important statistic to remember, especially in terms of a voting block, if nothing else. The second statistic I'd like you to think about in relation to that is, one of the most hidden things in our county is that one in five people that are on the streets, homeless, are sixty-plus. One in four, fifty-five-plus. And when you think about policies for seniors, we talk a lot about, a lot about in our plan about what we're doing for curbs, what we're doing for housing, what we're doing for this and that. But it, one of the things we aren't keeping front of mind is what a large portion of the homeless population that exists are actually seniors. With that, I'll move on to the next seventy-five slides. The Aging Readiness Plan includes eighteen goals that are implemented through sixty-seven strategies. These strategies are intended to improve the community's capacity to support its growing older population and ultimately benefit all ages. The Healthy Communities Chapter describes the current opportunities in Clark County for older adults to access healthy food, parks, recreation, and goods and services. It also sets out goals for improving access to each of these resources. The Housing Chapter provides strategies to address the various housing needs of the aging communities, such as multi-generational living options and affordable units. And again, affordable units, seems like a common sense thing. Anybody want to guess how long what the waiting list, average waiting list is for a senior looking for affordable housing? Three to five years. So if you get on a list today, and you're fifty-five-plus, you could wait three to five years to be eligible for a unit in Clark County. The Mobility Chapter address, Chapter includes strategies based on the transportation and mobility needs of older adults. It outlines ways that older adults tend to travel, and the areas that could use improvements, such as public transit, ADA accessibility, and others. The Civic Involvement Chapter includes strategies based on increasing civic involvement opportunities for older adults. This includes expanding engagement and volunteer opportunities, such as attending community events, participating in local government, or participating in advocacy work. The final chapter is on emergency preparedness. This chapter, the final chapter is on emergency preparedness, which was the focus for the Commission in two thousand twenty-four. Slide, thank you. The Emergency Preparedness Chapter provides strategies that outline older adults, how older adults could be affected by natural or human cause hazards, and other ways the county can improve their health and safety of older adults. It explains ways older adults could be impacted by communicable diseases, wildfires, flooding, extreme heat events, and geological or seismic hazards, and the ways to prepare older adults for these hazards. As mentioned earlier, Aging Readiness Plan implementation efforts in two thousand twenty-four focused on emergency preparedness. These strategies that were chosen by the Commission members to highlight included developing older adult-specific alerts and communications channels, encouraging neighborhood associations and homeowners' associations to work with CRESSA to educate community members about emergency preparedness, and implementing local plans. The Commission dedicated eight monthly meetings to increase awareness about what emergency preparedness is and what it can look like on a personal, neighborhood, community, and regional level. The Commission invited experts from CRESSA, Clark County's Regional Emergency Services Agency, to share their Prepare in a Year Plan for Disaster. The topics of discussion started with plans for creating an emergency kit and a plan, and expanded that planning with your neighborhood and the broader community. Slide. Commission members learned many important lessons, including how to assemble go-bags and how to create robust communication networks with people both living near us and far away from our, outside our area. CRESSA staff also highlighted some of the challenges aging adults may experience and pinpointed solutions to some of these challenges. Commission members were surprised to learn that only about one hundred emergency response personnel are on active duty each day to serve the entirety of Clark County. Therefore, in the event of a local or regional emergency, we must be able to take care of ourselves for an indeterminate amount of time. Slide, please. With each monthly presentation, we began to understand that as emergencies unfold, we need to keep positive mindset and focus on what will happen next. Our ability to remain safe dramatically increases with careful pre-planning, which includes problem-solving individual challenges. Especially significant was the increased recognition of the fear aging adults may have about potential emergency disaster situations, and the importance of outlining strategic elements of an individual communication plan. It also helped bridge dialogues around difficult issues, such as how to problem-solve mobility concerns, and such as navigating stairways, reliance on assisted transportation, and identifying social isolation of our community members. Slide. The CRESSA Commission on Aging partnership included discussions with community, community members, attending monthly COA meetings, underscoring the need to post information and resources specific for aging adults directly to the CRESSA website. We invite you to visit cressa-nine-one-one.org and search for seniors, which will lead you to the new information. Slide, please, thank you. In addition to the focus on emergency preparedness, the Commission on Aging presented its annual Silver Citizens Award. To encourage and support older adults for their contributions, the Clark County Commission on Aging established the Silver Citizens Program to recognize older adults who go above and beyond in service. The award recognizes the valuable contribution of older adults make to the vitality of our community, and is open to any county resident sixty years or better who has enhanced the community through their life's work, engagement of others, volunteerism, and other impactful acts of service to the community of any age group. In two thousand twenty-four, we actually had two winners. They were Bev Jones and Larry Smith. Bev's a battleground resident and served with the community professionally for forty-three years as a nurse. She's active in many organizations, including the Lions Club, North Clark County Community Food Bank, and the Battleground Education Foundation. Larry is a Vancouver resident that served as a City Council member, Mayor Protem, and as a Commission on Aging member for six years. He's also involved in many organizations and co-founded CMAC, the Community Military Appreciation Committee.
And you're tall. Thanks, Ken, for your vital and important statistics. He's got all the brains. I'm just here to help present. Okay, finally, other Commission work included members and staff giving presentations at several local community meetings in two thousand twenty-four. This included city and town council meetings, neighborhood groups, and advisory bodies. Commission members also provided a presence at meetings for the Public Health Advisory Council, the Aging and Development Resource Network, and the Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. That's called ADSWA, if you couldn't follow all those words, the Advisory Council. They also cosponsored a County Council proclamation for National Caregivers Month. So this is the end of our formal presentation. We would like to now open this up for discussion and to answer any questions you may have for us, or to discuss any topics of interest to you.
Thank you very much. Council, we'll open it up to you for questions to the Commission. Councilor Favela?
Thank you so much. I really love all of this information, all the work that you all are doing. Regarding the elderly homeless population, or unhoused that are on the streets, are any of them veteran-related? And is there any work being done at the state level with the inadequacies of the health insurance and the lack of coverage and the lack of services that those individuals receive?
Permission to speak as a citizen and not as the Commission member?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I've been in post-acute care, senior living, senior housing for literally forty years. And so I can tell you, as somebody involved in that side of the equation, there's an enormous amount that's going on. As an operator, the disconnect is the work between institutions and how that connects to an individual.
Correct.
Okay, and so the trouble or the difficulty is connecting institutionally at an individual level. I don't know how else to describe that, but an enormous amount of work. And the VA, frankly, is very progressive. The difficulty with the VA is being able to navigate, just like Medicare, navigating it and understanding how to get to what you want to get to.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And going back to your, the fact that we have the, or your one in five or over sixty years old, Clark County, Southwest Washington, actually has the most senior living facilities per capita in the state of Washington.
The answer's probably true.
Yes.
In just Clark County, you've got over two hundred, depending on where you are in the country, it's called board and care, group homes, family adult homes, small homes, residential homes with two, three bedrooms. We have two, over two hundred of those in this county, which, I work nationally, that number stunned me. And over the last two years, I've tried to visit almost every one of those. And that's frankly, the only way you solve the problem that we've got facing us, because the minute you say, we're going to build a two-hundred-bed affordable housing community, if you say that today, that's five years down the road. And your problem goes away probably more or less in ten to fifteen years, because the boomers start declining, right? So flat, and there's a guy, but what is the guy's name from Specialty Housing? There's a company over in Portland named Specialty Housing Inc. It's a not-for-profit, and I apologize for not remembering his name, but he actually stated it best, the only way you solve the housing problem that you've got today for seniors is by, I think it was you saying, where, that's the only way you're going to do it quickly.
Okay, great, thank you, Councilor. Anybody else have questions for the Commission? Councilor Davis?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate your presentation. I've had the privilege of hearing a few of the annual updates, obviously not sitting up here, but just in other settings. And the work you guys do and the focus, and really the, kind of that, that global look, comprehensive look, I mean, you don't expect a goal to be like access to healthy food and trails and things like that. I mean, those are things that we, like, that's a part of it, but you, you wouldn't necessarily expect that. And so I just really appreciate the work and the thoughtfulness that you guys put into this. I like how a lot of these recommendations, you know, yes, it's at a county level. We have a very diverse county from like, just like the types of cities and communities that we have. You know, we have downtown Vancouver. They also have Yakult. And, you know, what you can do in those two settings are, are very different, but I, I just really like how you guys, the recommendations that you put forward are things from our policy side that, you know, whether you are thinking about downtown Vancouver, or Ridgefield, or Yakult, that you can put forward, a lot of those goals. So I just really appreciate what you guys do.
You know, it's such an, can you hear me if I just speak like this?
Yeah, sure.
It's such an interesting comment, because one of the things we hear about most, just as citizens, is the whole concept of aging in place. And it sounds like a lovely concept. I don't want to ever have to move out of your house. You don't ever want to have to move out of your house. But you've got to, then you've got to start thinking about, okay, healthcare has a staffing crisis. And if I'm delivering services in an urban setting, that's one thing. If I'm sending somebody thirty miles out into Yakult, or thirty miles, twenty miles out into Canis, that's going to multiply that by a significant factor. And so when we talk about the aspirations of the Aging Readiness Plan, it's a spectacular document when it comes to aspirations and things that are actually being done on a regular basis. I think one of the things that you're going to be dealing with as a City Council is how do we, what do we do to help support getting those services to our citizens? Logistically, logistics will be one of the bigger issues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's good. Any other questions? Councilor Hamilton?
Just to that point that you said, also thank you for your presentation. Sorry to jump right into the question there. I really appreciated that. If you could have a wish list tomorrow that each county, County Council, or each City Council was able to put forward, what would be a wish list as far as, as your Commission goes?
Awareness, single, if, if we could find a way to get the citizenry to focus, I'm sure you have other issues that are similar, the crisis that we are heading toward can absolutely be solved. It can be averted. it can be averted, but it can't be solved or averted by ignoring it. And so whatever, our ask for you is, if there's anything you can do to promote the fact that we have educational sessions the third Wednesday of every month at four-thirty, posted on our website, she's my straight person. So if you just type in Commission on Aging, Clark County, meetings, the agenda will come up with a link, you can join that remotely. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Very informative.
I would like to reiterate that our meetings are on the third Wednesday of the month.
Third Wednesday of the month.
Four-thirty PM. They're pretty awesome. They also don't interfere with the Port of Ridgefield meetings, they are on alternate Wednesday afternoons, and they're a little after that as well.
And where are those at again?
They're down at the Public Service Center on the sixth floor. So hope to see you there.
Okay, great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our presentation. We'll move on to our first item of business tonight. This is the award for Ridgefield I-5 South Connector Phase Two Study Contract. Mr. Green, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, Dr. Thalberg was talking about this a little earlier, so I'm going to present this. This is the award for the next stage contract for the South Connector kind of planning process. It's been in an alternatives analysis, this phase will take it to a preliminary locally-preferred alternative and then recommend some ways to look for money to get us into the next set of phases. So this one is mostly planning, but it also has some environmental work to assist in assign or assessing these different alternatives. I'll talk a little bit about the maps in a second, just want to cover what's in this. We did put out a request for qualifications for the consultant work. This is a federal grant that we received from the Regional Transportation Council, cities providing local match out of local funds. We do have partnerships with Clark County and Washdott on this because obviously most of the study areas in unincorporated Clark County, and there's this thing called I-5 at two-nineteenth that's at the east end. So those are coordination points that we need to have. There were two proposals received, we did interview both teams, and out of those, the company of Kittleson and Associates was recommended as the consultant by the Evaluation Committee as a consult to negotiate with, and I can say that the negotiation was successful, which is why we're coming tonight for the award. It does have a seventeen percent disadvantaged business enterprise goal. In your packet, there's a variety of other components from Kittleson Scope. I didn't make a graphic out of it, but a, there's a schedule in there, it's a one-year process for this. And one of the big first early tasks on this, we are currently working on scheduling a joint city-county council study session to kick things off in September. So we will get back once we've gotten a date locked in on that to make sure everybody is there and our consultant and staff can, joint staffs, because the county and Washdott are also involved, can kick things off. What I'd like to do is quickly go through some of the highlights and then talk about the maps. This does have a robust community involvement process, and that's led by GLA, or it used to be Jean Lawson and Associates, Adrienne Dodona is their lead, I've worked with her for about twenty-five years on a variety of projects around the county. She's very qualified and lives just north of Battleground, so she is local. Also, when we start looking at the study area, a good part of the southern part of the study area encompasses the Fork Creek's Neighborhood Association. Dr. Thalberg's a member of that Neighborhood Association, as am I, so I'm sure Dr. Thalberg will be around the next several months, making sure that I make sure that, even though in retirement, that our consultant gets the Neighborhood Association involved with this effort. I would like to go through quickly the maps. Somebody who saw these maps when we had the joint city-county study session back in late 2023. This is, the first map is the current Regional Transportation Council Plan, which shows pretty much a straight line, then gap, and then another line uphillhurst. That gap is basically saying, we need to figure out what, how to fill in the gap. So that's what's in the current regional transportation plan. Why don't you go to the next slide? This is what's in the plan you're going to be taking up the next action item. You'll notice there's a few yellow squares. We noticed since the last meeting, we have a couple of map corrections to make. Doesn't change any of the numbers, but we want to make sure that the numbering system matches the table that you have in that. So you'll see these, I'll describe these in more detail when we get to the Transportation Capital Facilities Plan. But in that, number forty-nine is the South Connector project, and that ellipse is kind of a representation, it's not defining the study area, it's just defining it for the capital facilities plan, that we have a variety of alternatives that are within that ellipse. But the process itself is the one that will drive what goes into that ellipse as far as the preferred alternative. Let's see, do I have another slide or is that it? Okay, this is what Dr. Thalberg reflected earlier, this is what came out of the previous stage of the study. And those are a variety of mostly east-west alternatives that go through resource lands, they're agricultural, zoned. There's one that Dr. Thalberg was talking about, which goes north-south up to Cardy Road and then connects to Cardy Road to take you back to Hillhurst. Or there's a purple kind of stub that goes to northeast, that actually will take you to the future Discovery Drive. And this is about where Discovery Drive would come out in the plan you're going to see a little bit later. I'm not trying to get you to decide on one of these now, this process will do that, and there's a lot of work that needs to happen to get here or get there. Let's see, I think that's all the maps that I had, yes. So what we are asking for tonight is to award the contract for a total of not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the scope that's attached in the staff report. Also, a contingency of additional ten thousand dollars that would be set aside as needed for future efforts or as needed as we go through the next twelve months. So with that, I will end my presentation and return it to counsel.
Great, thank you, Mr. Green. Counsel, we'll go to all of you for questions or comments at this point, and I'll start on my far left and with Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. Just for clarification, what does a seventeen percent disadvantaged goal mean that you brought up at the beginning?
It's, it's actually came from Washdott. It's a goal that has to be seventeen percent of that two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand needs to be for a consultant or consultants that are disadvantaged business enterprise. GLA is a women-owned business enterprise, so they do qualify for that, they're using, comprising most of that seventeen percent. And so you can see about what the public involvement part of this would be, it'd be about twenty percent of that total budget.
Great. Counselor Verkell?
Mr. Davis, was there at one time consideration to having this exit off of two-nineteenth hook up with two-twenty-ninth?
Well, I think if you look at those lines, one of them probably does go that direction. I can tell you, I was on the planning team back in the day for that interchange, and if you notice that it has kind of a northwesterly orientation as it goes across I-5, that was on purpose. I was on purpose to aim it toward Ridgefield, and it was up to Ridgefield and Clark County to figure out what happens from there. So there was an early, I believe there was an early consideration going on two-twenty-ninth as that east-west route. This one, obviously, that was just the line on the map, this study will generate a lot more information and get a lot more people involved before that locally-preferred alternative selection is made.
Just one more question. The preferred routes, are most of those in the county or within city limits?
And these are alternatives, so there is no statement of preference yet. Most of the alignments are within unincorporated Clark County, with the exception of the southern, southernmost parts of these, as you get toward northwest two-twenty-ninth Street in the Sanderling area, Cardy Road portions of that are in the city, but the bulk of, if you take the linear footage or square, the linear mileage of these, the bulk by far is within unincorporated Clark County.
Thank you.
Counselor Wells, any questions?
No questions, I got some comments.
Sure.
I was involved in that, in the planning with, okay, with the Ridgefield Junction Neighborhood Association prior over twenty years ago. And prior to the two-nineteenth interchange being built, there was a lot of public comment that was entered into at that time as part of the records with Washdott. And that interchange was built with a access to the west so that it would go to Ridgefield. But there was comments from all the people, two-nineteenth, Rolling Hills, them were all recorded at public meetings way back when, and alternative route, a potential route, was picked prior to the interchange being built in 2008, that's when it was developed. So I've got a little institutional knowledge on that, as you're shaking your head. Yes, Chuck, you know I was in the middle of it.
Yes, I even have minutes from that meeting you're talking about with me tonight.
Mayor Protem, any questions or comments?
No, not really.
Okay, great. Counselor Favella, good? Counselor Davis?
Yeah, just wanting to catch up and also just kind of put it on the record, given that all the alternatives that have been presented are out of our urban growth boundary, who is going to have a voice when selecting the LPA?
In the scope, we, I'm not sure if it gets into that level of detail on that schedule, but the anticipation is it'll be a joint, there'll be a joint city-county council work session at the end.
Yeah.
Each council will then be asked to make their own, we call preliminary locally-preferred alternative selection.
Yeah, okay. So each of us will basically put forth our preferred alternative as individual councils as opposed to collaboratively?
There will be collaboration during the process.
Sure, of course.
The hope is that the, but the process under the environmental, there's a thing they call NEPA, which is National Environmental Policy Act, that's, the next stage is going to be either an environmental impact statement or environmental assessment. That process does outline that each partner agency, their body needs to make their selection.
Yeah.
And so we're hoping that by the time that wrap-up study session is, comes to fruition in the next year, that there's consensus around an alternative.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
I guess for me, I, there's a couple of questions kind of similar to that, you know, talking about, you know, this specific area that will be studied will be, it's largely outside the UGA even right now. What, so, and I know there's going to be some collaboration down the road that we've been talking about with the county, is, as far as right now, what is the county's involvement? Are we coordinating with the county at this juncture for this, for this analysis that's going to be conducted?
So the county's aware that we have the grant to move this next stage. They were actually invited to have a representative on our consultant selection committee, and they declined, I think for a variety of reasons, like they got, they got a resource study they need to get done too. But we have, the previous stage actually had some county staff that were liaisons to that phase back in 2019 to 2021. Though, two of them have now left and gone to Washdott. So they'll still be involved, but they'll be on the Washdott side. So we are working through, my counterpart, Ken Layder, at the county's public works director there, and their lead transportation planner, Harrison Houston, will be the ones that will be the, kind of sitting in at our project management team meetings as partners as well as Washdott.
Okay, but as far as the financial impacts for this specific study that will be done, this is all on us. Right now, the county's not participating in the financial side of this at this point?
That is correct. The only involvement the county's had on the financial side is the last two legislative sessions, the county council has sent a letter of support for our five-million-dollar request to the legislature, all of which have not been successful, but we're hoping that that support will continue. And as far as the next stage after the year is over, it probably is a good time to go to the county and see if there's any financial help they can give for that next stage.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Counsel, oh, Counselor Hamilton, go back to you.
Thank you. Just to be clear, on this, the alternatives here, the blue is also the same one that Dr. Thalberg presented, that ninety-five percent of people signed the petition for, is that the, does the blue carry on his map in this map? Just to be clear.
Well, I might have to ask Dr. Thalberg to clarify, because I thought the petition was on that purple alternative, went north-south and then.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Connected to Cardy Road. But I just, I don't want to get into the weeds, because this is actually a consultant contract award.
Gotcha.
There will be an initial step, a kickoff, as I mentioned, that joint city-county council meeting, that the work to date will be presented, any petitions that have been submitted to the city will be presented, and these, this map will be kind of the starting point, it's not the deciding point.
Gotcha, thank you.
Counsel, any other discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this point.
Yeah. I move to approve awarding the contract for the Ridgefield I-5 South Connection Stage Two Consultant Contract to Kittleson and Associates for an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars plus an additional ten thousand for contingencies.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to award the contract for South I-5 Connection Stage Two to Kittleson and Associates for an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand with ten thousand in contingencies. Counsel, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Counsel Amalshin Karies. Onto our next item of business tonight. This will be the second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-four approving an updated Transportation Capital Facilities Plan and amending chapter eighteen point zero seven zero of the Ridgefield Municipal Code by adopting an updated transportation impact fee project list and an updated transportation impact fees altogether. Chuck, Mr. Green will go back to you, sir.
All right, thank you. This is an abbreviated version of the presentation that I gave last time, and it's focused on a few things that we'll need to fill in the blanks. And last time, there's a discussion about the citywide transportation impact fee rates. We have four alternatives to present tonight, we will need counsel to choose one, because that then goes to one of the next budget, agenda items, which is the master fee schedule, where those rates would be plugged in. I'll go through, there's a couple of mapping corrections that I need to point out as we go through. Let's see, we've seen this one, and we've seen the policies. I do want to point out, going back to the policies and going back to some of the items that are in this plan, kind of a little selfish ulterior motives here, having been on the Commission on Aging with the Aging Readiness Plan update, there's a section out of the chapter on transportation and mobility, and so some of that, that came out of that plan have been worked into this one. So we start talking about all ages and abilities and mobility for all users, including the older adults. So this is carrying forward some of what was included in that Aging Readiness Plan update. Why don't we go to the next slide? So this is what you've seen, is just basically covering what's driving the plan and some of the new elements. Let's see, let's go to the next one. So this is the first one I want to present where there's. So this is the first one I want to present where there's, and I have to thank Dr. Thalberg for pointing out one of these to me. But we went through and compared the list of projects that are, one of the attachments that the ordinance is in this map. And we had made a, found there was a duplication from the last presentation where one of the, where, was basically the corridor, the scenic collector corridor through the G Creek Plateau was not called out. And that's actually item number 50 on this map. So this map now is the number 50. The duplication was number 47, should have been aligned with an east-west collector that Sanderling is built on the south, some part of the dirt development. The 47 unfortunately got moved up to Cardy Road, it's not referring to anything along Cardy Road. So this map is correct. It doesn't change any of the numbers that we're going to be talking about. It just makes some numerical corrections to match the project list that you also have with this ordinance. Let's see, let's go to the next one, and this is another map correction. We had, when we put together the Cardy Road TIF overlay, we had specifically excluded Sanderling from this because Sanderling already has Orlando's approvals, that really part of the Cardy Road subarea. Unfortunately, there was a finger that in the mapping that came out of that to pull out Sanderling was mistakenly thought that was part of Sanderling. It's actually Cosgrove, is that? Hendrickson, sorry. Hendrickson is part of this development consortium, is part of the, the urban holding process going on in the subarea. They are included in the TIF's overlay. So just to correct that, that little rectangle with the callout there is actually part of the TIF overlay district that we're talking about. Again, it doesn't change any numbers, it just makes a error. There's a scribners error on the map and we want to correct that as part of your consideration. Let's go to the next one. This, last time we talked about that the construction cost index has been going up faster than the consumer price index. We've been indexing the traffic impact fee rates over the consumer price index since 2018. And so what we're seeing is that the construction cost index is quite a bit higher. So when we start factoring, what should that rate look like when you factor in actual construction costs which factor into the cost estimates? You'll find that that does have an impact on the transportation impact fee rates. The next one then is, we start talking about what the effect of that was. We covered that last time and not going to go into any more detail on this as well as the new projects that are also factor into that TIF rate and factor into the different, the alternative options that we want to sort through tonight. Let's go to the next slide. So there are, there's essentially, I think there's four, three options that we've narrowed it down to from last time. One is what we call this base option. And the base option based on the last month or last meeting's discussion is, let's have the transportation trails, which are eligible for TIFs under legislation from a couple of years ago. Let's start with them at 5% of their cost being TIF eligible and let's exclude the North 10th, 20th future over crossing of I-5. So that becomes our base. Then step this up and say, all right, let's take that, let's take the trail TIF's share to 10% and let's add in short collectors. So the base option removes a number of the shorter collectors. This one adds those shorter collectors back in. Option three then is, I guess you would call it the full meal deal, that is option two. But then it adds the North 10th, 20th over crossing, future, future over crossing to the calculations. There is a TIF lookup table that is referenced in the ordinance. I referenced it last time, it is attached in your packet. As part of the action, we are asking that council direct staff to include that lookup table. To implement it would be to incorporate it into the engineering standards. So when development comes in, they have a way to look up, how many trips are we going to have? And how can, you know, that gives you a way to estimate what their TIF assessment would be rather than having to do a FOBAL and traffic impact study to get to that number. So this one cuts out that, that process. And it does give some consideration for affordable housing. It does give some consideration for mixed-use developments or mixed-use areas where some of their trips would not impact the collector and arterial system. So there's a reduction factor in that lookup table. Let's go to the next one, here's the options. So our current TIF rate is $545.81 per daily trip. So that, we also call that the commercial rate. We have rates for single-family residential and multifamily residential that kind of pivot off of that rate. Single-family is 9.57 times the daily rate. That means that a single-family household based on institute transportation engineers generates on average 9.57 vehicle trips a day. Not all from within the household, some of the trips are deliveries that they have coming to the house, trash pickup, mail, et cetera, that all get factored into that rate. Multifamily tends to have a lower vehicle trip rate, lower auto ownership, more use of walking and bicycling and in some cases transit. That rate is 5.86 times that daily rate. So with the current situation, that's the left side of this table, that's what you see today. That's what we're charging developments. Base rate, as I mentioned, we remove the short collectors, take trails down to 5%, remove North 10th, 11th. That gets the rate down to $583.31. So that's a 7% increase over the current TIF rate. Option two then, as I mentioned, takes the trails up to 10%, adds in some of the shorter collectors that were pulled out under the base option. That ends up being $703.8 per daily trip. There's, there's actually a rather measurable cost when you start adding in trails and those shorter collectors. Option three then adds North 10th, 20th over crossing and that ends up being 769.45, that was the number that we talked about last time. That's a 41% increase over the current rate. And that table below then is what, choosing one of these is the table that then we give to Kirk, Mr. Johnson behind me, to work into the master fee schedule item that's a little bit later in this meeting. I don't know if you wanted to cover this now because this is, this is primarily the action item that we need to settle on to fill in the blanks in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd say, Mr. Green, before we do, there's kind of two components that I see to this. One is just the overall capital facilities plan and then there's this, this, the TIFs that we're looking at, the TIF options. So could we back up a half step and make sure what counsel's good on the capital facilities plan first?
Yeah, why don't we go back to the map? Because that map and then you, I didn't print off the list because that would get even smaller than this map, but that list is attached to your packet. So those projects show the breakdown as to what component is TIF, what component is grant share. We even have, you know, the TIF overlays, the two that we're proposing, those in that and that matches, the numbers match what's on this map. So this is essentially that table in this map or the capital facilities plan.
So the overlays are 50, 47, 48, and 49? Is that, is that what that is on the map?
Yeah, those are, those, 50 is just the G Creek Plateau scenic collector, which is not TIF eligible in this proposal.
Oh, it's a, it's a circle there, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so the TIF overlays are that other map that, I think, is that next Julie? That, so that's, this is the, I guess the TIF overlay component of the CFP. So combine these together and that's, that's the bulk is really what the CFP is all about.
Okay, great. Counsel, let's look at the CFP first. Any questions or comments on that before we move on?
I've got a couple of comments, I got lost in the middle there somewhere, but I'd like a couple of slides ahead. Mr. Not that one, next one, right there, nope, next one. I don't see what I was, okay, yes. TIF project list and rate preference. Number one, the base includes North 10th and 20th Street future corridors. So we're raising the TIF rate for the 20th Street corridor, is that correct?
So number one excludes the North 10th future over crossing.
Okay.
And then the option three adds that in.
Okay, well, with the 20th Street corridor, we don't even have that in our urban growth area. We're trying to get it in, but who knows whether we're going to get it and we're starting to charge TIF rates for it and it isn't even in our bailiwick. I mean, that's my comment there. North 10th, we could maybe figure that in, but 20th, it isn't even in our house. So why are we turning around and figuring a TIF rate including that when we're not even there yet?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I mean, I think we hit on that last week. I'm glad you brought it up again because we can revisit this every year. And so like, right now it's out of the, the growth boundary, but if it comes in and once we get activity, we can, we've got a decent time to revisit.
Then we could raise our rate at that time.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what we were kind of agreeable to. I know we were going, I know we kind of jumped back ahead, but on the TIF, I think we kind of got to a point where we were more comfortable with options one and two and not as warm to option three with all of it, it seemed excessive.
Because of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that excludes, it excludes the North 10th and the 20th Street. So the, those are the ones you, you're questioning whether we should include. So if that was the case, you would say Counselor, option number one is your preferred option, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I see option three adds in.
Yes, it does add in. And that's the one, that's where you get the 41% increase and it's the, like Mr. Green said, the full meal deal, you will.
I got it wrapped around my gray matter now.
Counselor Hamilton, is this your hand up? No? Other questions on this at this point? It sounds like we're, wait, are we good on the CFP though? Feels like everyone's really good there.
Yeah.
That's the familiar territory. We can jump into this, do you want to continue presenting then we can open to questions? Or you want to take questions now?
Oh, I, let's see what I have left. This is just showing, yeah, this just shows the, the different rates based on your option. Oh, this one actually shows the subarea. We did not talk about, as much about options for the TIF, the two TIF subareas. So this is what is in the calculations now. We don't have options because we didn't discuss any, if there was counsel interest in studying options. So these, what that would look like. I want to point out though that any development in either of these TIF subareas, the citywide TIF gets added to that. This is not in replacement of the citywide TIF. This is the subarea TIF that's on top of, excuse me, the subarea TIF that's on top of the citywide TIF for these areas.
So tell me how this would affect, okay, so I'm looking at, at this middle one. Single-family residential, 957 daily trip rate, G Creek Plateau. So how would that affect a house that's built there? Can you explain that to me, please?
A house that's built now or a house that will be built?
A house that would be built with this proposed $10,000, so what does that mean?
So you would take the, let's say it's single-family because primarily G Creek Plateau is single-family.
Right.
There's really no commercial yet and there's no multifamily that I'm aware of yet. So if you take the proposed, which is 10,000, was it 10,633.19, I want to compare that to, we actually are attaching a surcharge to Ridgefield Heights and Ridgefield Farm, which is that 846456. So it says increase of about $2,000 per household in fees. Now if you back up a slide, add that rate to the single-family rate in the second line of the table. And so that would be, let's say the base option two, you would add 67.28 to that, whatever that number was.
The 10,006?
10,633.
So like over $17,000.
Over $17,000 per household, per house, yes.
So you're going to, you want to add this to that?
So they, you would add them together. So that, that would be, that 10,000 plus the citywide rate would be what's, what's assessed.
I wasn't, I mean, I wasn't here for the last, okay, so, okay, so let's go back and back one slide again. So on this commercial rate?
The first row?
The first row. So, okay, so we put in a business up on Hillhurst and the daily trip. So then when we put in a business up in Hillhurst, do we charge them a daily rate for every customer they think is coming into their business? Is that how we do that?
Yes, the, what they would do is, what the current way to do it is, they do a traffic study. They tell us how many new daily trips they're going to be from their development. And we take that number of daily trips, let's say it's 300, multiply by that commercial rate and that's what their TIF assessment would be.
And that's a one-time thing they pay when they get their building permit?
When they get the building permit. Now the lookup table simplifies that, so they just tell what the use is, how many or how much square footage, the rates there. If they have a mixed-use environment or they have other ways to reduce it, they actually get a reduced rate. And then that becomes their TIF assessment without having to spend, you know, $7,000 or $8,000 to do a traffic study.
I'm just asking because I've heard some comments from some people that are trying to do business with us that I'm just, and I did not understand exactly how this works, so thank you.
Actually, that lookup table idea came from a couple of the developers who expressed that frustration of having, having to spend some, several thousand dollars of consultant money to generate a number
Right.
when it'd be easy to have a lookup table. And that, that's why it's there, that's actually their suggestion.
So they pay that upfront when they, when they get their building permit from us?
Yes.
Okay. And is this, I mean, is this more than most cities charge, Mr. Green, or is this pretty normal or what?
There's a, there's a table on there.
There's a table, a chart, let me, let's go to the chart.
A chart, yeah.
I do want to, this is a serious consideration here that we talked about a lot last time.
Oh, okay.
So this, the current rate is that, I don't even know what color that is. It looks kind of off-range to me, but it's, whatever it is to the left, it says Ridgefield Current. So that's the current, these are all based on that commercial rate. All like a, single-family, multifamily are proportionally the same. Ridgefield option one is that one that takes out
Okay.
things. And that's the one next to that, that light orange bar. Then the next two are what the two and three options would be. This is the citywide TIF. Now, the option, the bars that are to the right, one of those is if you take the, let's say for G Creek, what the current one would be under the current surcharge plus the current TIF. The blue, the light, the darker blue to the right is if you take option one, which is that base option and add it to the overlay, that's where that bar ends up. And we do have a couple of comparisons in here. Mount Vista, they had a lot of work done a few years ago on 179th Street. There was a similar urban holding situation. They created a TIF surcharge which actually got rolled into their Mount Vista TIF. That's kind of in the middle of this chart that shows what they're assessing. Camas in their north shore, North Lacamas, a planning area a couple of years ago adopted a TIF for that area, which is next to that Mount Vista one. So you can see that, yes, when you start looking at the TIF overlays plus the citywide, they are, they are higher than those, those examples that we gave you.
So is this because this is more diff, a more difficult place for them to, I mean, is it more difficult for us for them to build there? I mean, is that, what's the reason that this is that more expensive?
Each one is focused on a, on a major project. The 35th G Creek Plateau is on that 35th G Creek extension that we kicked off a couple of weeks ago. Right now that's being plugged into this as a $40 million project.
Okay.
And the TIF has about a third of that cost. So that's, that's factoring into that one. Cardy Road in this is about a $25 million project plus the roundabout at Hillhurst and Cardy. and Cardy. So again, that's pretty much driving the Cardy Road TIP overlay because that's, that's funding again about, well, that's half of that cost in the Cardy Road is, uh, would be that.
So these would go to offset those projects, the, the funding required for those projects by charging additional TIP for those overlays?
So the, so the property that we, okay, so I'm going to take this down another level. So the property that we annexed a, a few months, a couple of months ago, and we gave people permission to build some houses on some lots there, whatever, I can't think of the name of the developer, but anyway. So then that, that would be under this Cardy Road?
That, that is correct. We actually have, I think there's thirteen.
Yeah, go for it.
Parcels that are actively working with us in various phases of, uh, development proposal. We call it the consortium because we're working, basically they have to come together and create a finance plan that funds the road improvements plus extends water and sewer into the Cardy Road sub area before that we can come to you and, and have the urban holding lifted for them to move forward and develop. And so it's, you know, we're talking, you know, pretty, a pretty major project when you start factoring in the road, water and sewer costs, we're doing that. But right now, none of the agencies, either us or Clark Regional, have a project to do that. And so this TIP overlay would fund at least the, the road, part of, half of the road portion of it. If the consortium chooses to go ahead and do it themselves, half of what they put in for the road project would be eligible to TIP credits in the sub area. And that could be sold to other developers who are further to the east, um, that are still part of the TIP overlay, um, but, and would benefit by having the road and infrastructure improvements in place. So that's, that's how kind of the, what we've been doing with the TIP program, uh, for several years now is when developers build, overbuild their, their frontage improvements and include what is for future growth, we give them TIP credits for that overbuild part that's for future growth.
So which of these, which of these would have been for the Ridgefield Heights?
So that would be, um, G Creek Plateau. And so if you look at that second from the right.
Okay, so that most expensive one?
Yep.
This one right here.
Okay. So was this already, was this an effect, I mean, what was it an effect when they started building that? Did we? No, not this.
And, and anything along Cardy Road right now, uh, needs, uh, an urban holding lift in order to allow them to develop under the Ridgefield zoning. A requirement for them doing that is to have a finance plan to provide the urban infrastructure along Cardy, uh, that would support the, those developments.
But if we put this in place now, is anything new going to be under this or no? Because they've already got.
So anything along Cardy Road would not be able to move until they have a finance plan. Now, what this does is creates a, an impact fee that allows them to get credits for, um, some of that overbuilding because they're building not only for themselves, they're building for others in that same area who might not have frontage along Cardy, but they're also building for, um, future, uh, multifamily and business zoning to the east, which also would benefit by having these improvements in place. It's a payback mechanism.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Davis will go to, I think, get a question next, and I'll go to everyone else.
Yeah, I guess just to piggyback on, uh, what Mayor Pro Tim was just talking about, I think, just to clarify, like, current projects in the Cardy area that are in urban holding, they are not vested into the current rates, correct?
Correct. They, they need, they need to lift the urban holding before they can vest anything under city standards.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to clarify. So they would be working with the, this new set of fee structure because they're not vested?
Yeah, and, and there's other, I mean, there's development standards that you all passed, um, a few months ago. But yes, this, they would be, um, they, they need to create a finance plan essentially. And this is one option to help, um, pay some impact fees or get credits for building that section. Because they're also building, uh, sewer and water, which they could get system development charged credits for what they're building, which essentially would be serving others, not just themselves. And so this is one way to, um, create an impact fee structure where there's credits generated, they could then sell off to others in that same corridor.
I just wanted to clarify, like, making sure as we consider that, that, you know, all of us know who's maybe vested, who's maybe not vested, things like that. Um, the, the question that I had, um, it was, well, on the screen that we're all looking at, um, it, you know, you look at Ridgefield Current, you look at Ridgefield Option One Base TIP, in the visual representation at least, is just a small bump up and that makes a lot of sense. In terms of, you know, escalators with that or with the overlay, um, obviously it goes up when you add in like G Creek. And I'm looking at the last two bars and what doesn't, what's not clicking with me, and maybe this is like just the reflection, the fact that I don't teach math, um, but I was, it seems like the far, the furthest right bar should really only be just a notch above the one next to it, just as the second and third ones are. So is that just a visual representation that's just not clicking in my mind or maybe, maybe Mr. Johnson can help me with that?
So the, the difference, the difference is, um, the two bars to the right, well, the, the current and the, the, um, option one base do not have the overlay projects in them.
Yeah, I get it.
So it, it will not be proportionate like you see to the right. What you're seeing is the effect of, uh, in this case, the $40 million project. One is using the, the citywide, um, again, this is kind of the difference to the right, to the left plus that big difference in.
Well, I get why it's a lot higher. I get that, but I guess my point is the surcharge that we're talking about is flat, whether we are talking about our current TIF rate or whether we're talking about option one, two, or three, right? Is it the surcharge flat?
No, no, they, there is a difference between the current, we go back to the previous table and that shows you the current is eighty-four, sixty-four per house.
Yeah.
But the proposed with what's, um, that $40 million project included in that TIP overlay, that's another $2,000 per, per house. That's the difference in the bar height.
But if you, like on that screen, how it says Cardy Road, and, and the current says NA and propose, it's fifty-seven, twenty-one. That fifty-seven, twenty-one is flat, isn't it?
That would be, that would be for, um, Cardy Road, but not G Creek.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. But if for, but options one, two, and three have to do with the, the base rate, right?
For citywide TIP, not, not the sub areas.
Yeah, yeah, for citywide TIP.
Right.
Is there that escalator that, are they escalating the overlay rates as well or are the overlay rates constant regardless of what based fee structure we go with?
So let's go to the next, the bar chart again.
Yeah.
So what you would see, because those assume that base option for both Cardy and G Creek, if you went to option two, that bar, change in bar height would then get added to the bar heights for G Creek and Cardy Road.
Yeah.
Yes, that.
Yeah. Okay, I think it's maybe just a visual representation piece, 'cause, I mean, I guess I was reading it as Cardy Road overlay fifty-seven, twenty-one, it'd be fifty-seven, twenty-one over option one and fifty-seven, twenty-one over option three regardless.
Yes.
And so, yeah, it, okay, it just seemed like if we're comparing two side by side, I think it's just a visual representation that's just not clicking with me. It looks like it's a bigger jump maybe than it actually is. I don't know.
I, I think the better comparison is to look at the tables and the bars.
Okay.
Um, because the tables for Cardy Road, there is no current Cardy Road surcharge.
Yeah, of course.
So all of a sudden, it's fifty-seven hundred per house. G Creek, it's 2,000, but, um, we didn't do, like, what if we only funded half a Cardy Road with the TIP instead of 50% or, you know, 25%? We didn't do options like that, that, that didn't come out at the last meeting like that. So we just left the, uh, the numbers that you see in those tables. Uh, so it's flat, I guess, if you want to look at it that way.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Green, you may have answered this and I apologize, apologize if it's a redundant question. Looking at this then, does this, so if, would it, these overlay zones, whatever we go with tonight, those will go into effect, those would not be, those would be applying, like, those would apply to all new developments, new construction projects and that, like the Plateau and Cardy, Cardy Road area, correct?
That, that's correct. Now, this ordinance is in effect 30 days from.
No, yeah, no, I understand that.
So for G Creek, it might be a little different. I'm not aware of any pending developments where it would be affected by that one month time. Cardy Road, uh, they can't move forward with any developed land use approvals until we have a funding plan.
Yes, I understand that. So like, I, I guess I'm specifically referring to G Creek, uh, you know, if we approved that one, that would not be usurped by any sort of existing DA or anything like that. It would, that would, 30 days from now, we approve the ordinance, that goes into effect for all new applications, is that correct?
All new ones except the remaining ones of Ridgefield Heights, because the DA does control that, but I think, um, all of those lots, um, are in process in some way through either, uh, final plat or, uh, building permits. So, um, this would take a separate council action to override the development agreement for Ridgefield Heights for the remaining lots, because that would set that eighty-four, sixty-four rate.
So that's interesting. So if, if, if this doesn't override that, then what do we have left? Like, why would we even do this? Because that's the major development and building activity going on on, on the Plateau.
Let's go back to that map that shows the TIP overlays, because there's actually quite a bit of, um, the area. So Ridgefield Heights is, is, um, uh, kind of a part of that, um, but then we have, uh, the area along where Thirty-Fifth would go, um, if you extended it across the gully, um, or the canyon. You also have the Ridgefield Farm area, you have, um, several other parcels, uh, and most of these are actually not within the city yet. They'd have to get annexed in and then, um, uh, serve, uh, you know, come through with the development of the, the city zoning. I don't know that I included the table in there, um, in this presentation, but there's actually quite a few households beyond Ridgefield Heights that are in this that could develop. And so it's based on that future, that delta over what's there now.
Sure. I guess when I look at this here too, like, like we have these figures that says CPI increased between eighteen and 24, it, it increased 26%. Construction cross, cost increased, rose by 80% as well. And yet, and a DA, the builder has worked it in there to where that they're going to pay legacy rates and they're exempt from this. And so it feels like we're, we're kind of, I know it's not really like a, a cost and break even sort of thing, but it feels like they kind of get sort of a, a lesser rate, um, because it, this exempts them from that when this is, the majority of that activity that they're building up there, that all of those homes are going to contribute to the traffic impacts that are at that Thirty-Fifth, Thirty-Fifth extension, correct? So why, what is the, I, I don't, how did that happen that we give them kind of a pass on that, on future sort of fee increases from, from the city?
I cannot speak to that because I was not here. You'd have to ask the city manager, um, who did negotiate that. Uh, I can tell you, we actually have a few other places where there's either development agreement or master plan that locked in TIF rates from seven years ago and that TIF rate is much lower than what we have today. And so we are losing money on those too. So that's, that's the caution of development agreements is if you lock things in, that means, you know, unless there's an escalation clause, you're, you're losing over time.
Gotcha. Mr. Johnson, what, did you, were you going to contribute to that? It looked like you might've had something to say there too.
Yeah, I can add some to that. So at the time that the development agreement was signed, that was a contractual agreement between the city and the developer at the time for the cost that was expected at that time. And part of the, the agreement was for them to pay upfront for the first hundred homes that they were building and then as they came in with the, the future phases, that they would pay those upfront as well. We have received the first hundred, we received that a few years ago, and then they have paid, I believe it's the, the next 15, and then they're paying as they, you know, bring in an application, where typically we receive that, um, at the time that they're getting occupancy, they are paying that upfront as they go. So this was an agreement at that time, expecting that the cost, um, has gone up significantly. That is part of the agreement though, to get that money upfront so that we could start the work on Thirty-Fifth, doing all of the alternatives, analysis, the environmental impact statements, things like that, so that we could start to get in there and, and figure out what needs to be done with that road, uh, without the city having to contribute to that cost.
Yeah, okay. I think it's neither here nor there because we can't do anything about that now, but I, I look at that now, I'd say if that came to this council now, I'd, I'd be a hard no on that because it just, if, it pushed the cost back on the city, because now we have to raise rates to accommodate for the stuff that they wouldn't, would have otherwise had to pay for, so. Other questions or comments from council? Mr. Wells?
The only comment I had was them houses there were assessed an extra $9,000 per house back then. Was that not right, Mr. Green?
Um, it's eighty-four, sixty-four per, per house. That's what came out of the 177, um, lots that were in Ridgefield Heights. Just want to also point out that the first hundred, um, a couple of months ago or last month, they approved the, um, next phase of that, the environmental phase of the Thirty-Fifth G Creek Plateau extension. What they paid in is funding that next phase.
To sort of move the conversation forward a little bit, or at least, you know, to move it to the next part, um, I, you know, looking at the breakdown of options one, two, and three, I mean, I definitely think we need to start moving things in a direction to recover costs and, and charge what, you know, is the reality of, of these projects, but also not hinder, um, you know, development and, you know, everything that we add, you know, it's, it, it more or less gets passed on to the consumer. So, um, you know, I want to be conscious of that. Knowing that, um, base option, I, 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 I think we seem like we're all in alignment that option three is probably not needed right now. We don't need to be at that level with the tenth and, um, tenth or eleventh, or tenth or twentieth, excuse me. And option two includes, you know, still that escalation for the trails. You know, that's something that's obviously a passion for me. Um, I, I'm really excited about the prospects of what our community could look like if we really poured into, um, a trail network, uh, but also knowing that, you know, I think we, we as a council have valued escalating stuff, um, as opposed to just ripping off the Band-Aid. I'm more of a fan of option one. You know, if, if, I, I guess staff came back in a, in a year or two, um, with a, with a plan that, that just needed the, the money from a trails perspective and the collectors, um, I'd be interested in, in bumping up to that level to option two option, but I think it's premature to go for that now. So I'm more a fan of, uh, option one and starting to inch in that direction.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other input council on maybe a preferred direction so that we can move towards a, a motion here? Councillor Davis is, is, it sounds like councillor Davis, you are proposing option one without, or, or you're suggesting that that's one you're most favorable towards?
I'm most favorable. I mean, I wasn't, I guess, formally trying to make.
No, I, yeah, I didn't hear that, hear it that way.
But, you know, I was just kind of putting that out there to, you know, get that conversation started.
Anybody else from council, uh, have a, want to weigh in on that?
I, I think, uh, I would be in favor of option two. I realize we can revisit this every year, but I think that we have to have a starting point and I would prefer option two. Thank you.
Others, I heard, I heard a couple of whispers saying same, so, for option two. Okay. And that does include an additional, like 10% for trails. I mean, that's, that's the biggest, I think, the differentiator there.
Mm-huh.
I also say, just, just, just to be clear, like, I realize that when we do these types of things, like we, we just did the, the quick math and we're looking at $17,000 adding to the cost of a home while we're also supposed to look at affordable housing in the city. And so the, the irony is not lost on me there. I also understand that development, uh, has to fund, like new growth has to fund growth. So there's, there's that. So we're kind of, there's a catch 22 there.
If you recall from the last meeting, we also spoke with the city attorney and she did confirm that if there is affordable housing that is being built, that there is some wiggle room with. that there is some wiggle room with the fees that are associated with that.
Right. Okay.
I would go for option two, I think, too, also. Just kind of a, it's only a hundred and seventeen dollars more than option one, so I'm not.
Well, to clarify, that's per trip.
Per trip.
Per trip. Yeah, so it's going to be.
Yeah.
So if you look at down there, it goes from. Fifty-five.
So option one, for a single-family residential, for base option one, it's, the base is fifty-five eighty-two, and option two is sixty-seven twenty-eight, so it's a twelve-hundred-dollar difference.
Twelve-hundred-dollar, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the average house price is eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, so I guess it's not all that terribly much money on it, right?
Yeah. I mean, and I guess, it, 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 believe me, I mean, more money going to a trail network, I, I'm all about it. And I, maybe that will be the, the catalyst that, that we need to really start to get some stuff going, so.
I think so, yeah. Counselor Favella?
I think I'm comfortable with option two with the assurance that we already have, that this can be changed each year with new information, projects, cost circumstances. So whatever decision we make tonight, if there is information a year from now that we decide this is not beneficial, we can come back and change this.
That is correct. There is an annual adjustment that we've done. And we didn't do one last year, because we're in this process. There was one doubt, done back in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So annually, there is that opportunity.
So one option, council, is if, if, if council was really interested in making sure that we review this, like, we can. Doesn't mean we will, but you could build into the motion that you'd stipulate an annual review for the first, however many years, if you wanted to. I'll just throw that out there. Okay, if there's no more discussion on this, oh, whoa, yeah, there we go, one more.
Yeah. Yesterday, we had a ribbon cutting without a rim. We had, Mr. Burkle and I had a conversation with the owner. The owner said, when they put the dollars and cents together for opening up a business, they thought they had it covered. Then, when they started to get in there, she said, I probably going to look for, what's the word? I can't think. Contributions this winter. Because when she went, the first thing she found out, we had another five-thousand-dollar charge for our signage. We had another seven-thousand-dollar charge, that's fictitious, for something else. And when they had a budget for putting the building together, and they were so far over budget that they could be underwater, and that's what we're doing. Whereas we're raising them rates and we're pricing these small businesses out of our community. That's a comment I've got. Las Vegas, they don't have any impact fees. They turn around and support, all the businesses come in, and they make their money off of it after the fact. And they try and promote it. I watched a program on TV that way. That, that's my biggest concern. We're doing a nickel dime here and a nickel dime there, and pretty soon, I'm sorry, Chuck, you got, you got to cover the bases for the city, but the city needs to start tightening their belt somehow to turn around and make things work. And sorry, Kurt, but it's, it's a different story when you're trying to run a business and have to pay a payroll and turn around and keep the lights on. It's tough.
Yeah, we've had a couple that are closing already.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, it's getting, reality is starting to set in, so.
Just, just a further comment on what Mr. Councilmember Wells has been talking. She told us that it cost her an extra forty-five thousand dollars. Now, I am not certain what that all covered. I think probably some improvements in her building and whatever. But she was concerned, because that's what she would typically use to get through the winter months when she's not selling a lot of bicycles. But she really didn't go into a whole lot of detail, but it is something to talk about, yes.
I think those are, just to clarify, and I don't know for sure, but those sound like tenant improvements?
Yes.
And so the tenant is not necessarily paying the impact fees, because it's on construction of the building, the developer. So it sounds like that's the developer. But to, to Counselor Wells' point, I think there, there's a good point to be made there, that there are, like, we're talking about impact fees, there are real impacts to small businesses and to affordable housing and doing this. So that's, I'm glad to hear we're taking this seriously.
I got a question. Impact fees, are they charged prior to a business coming in? Or depending on the business that comes in, how much traffic they generate?
It's charged at the time of building permit, and it's based on what their use is proposed as.
That's where they pay the TIF fees.
Okay, council, I think we would like to move towards some level of, of a motion. I would entertain one at this point, if there's no further discussion, for one of the three options. Counselor Hamilton?
Not to further this discussion, but I feel like we just had conflicting conversations here that I just want to clarify. So I am a business owner. I am in favor of small business and people being able to afford to come here and us getting unique perspectives that aren't big boxes. So I tended to agree with Counselor Davis about it being option one. I think discouraging development is tricky. And I think that to go from, to a twenty-nine percent increase, while it makes sense, I, I, I understand there's a balance here. But I feel like we're having two different conversations that I would like further clarification on for all of us, because if we want to make sure that we're not passing things down to people, and that we're bringing unique perspectives, I don't think we can go with immediately option two. I think option one makes more sense, and then we revisit next year if we really are in a, in a situation that says we need to increase that for X, Y, and Z reasons, is my opinion.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, and, and I would build on that, where option one, the base rate, is basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's covering all of our bases. It's using real-life math. We're just backing out the Tenth and Twentieth Street projects, which we all feel is appropriate, because those aren't on the map right now. And I guess the difference between one and two is to, it elevates the amount that's, that's going to be collected that goes towards a trails network. You know, something I am passionate about, but again, my original statement was, I feel like it's a, there's some really cool stuff that we've talked about. I just feel like it's a bit premature. And if, you know, staff and Parks Board and every, you know, they've, they come in a year or two and they say, we, we want this, then we can bump it up and we can start collecting that money. I mean, we could do it now. Like, if we just, we feel like we want to get that seed money and that's the thing, then I guess that's a choice that we have. But I guess my statement is, option one, it does everything else we need it to do in terms of covering our costs and our plans and everything that's reflected on, you know, the, on, on the maps that we just looked at. It's just, you know, backing up those two key pieces. Did I get that right?
Yes, the, the only other part of option one is that there's some shorter collectors that,
I was going to say.
Primarily, so one or two developments that are not on that list, that get added in with option two.
So the difference is, option one is, is just the base, essentially just the base rate with a five percent for parks. Option two adds a short collectors and ten percent for parks. Is that, are those the main differences between the two?
I do want to clarify trails, because this is.
I'm sorry, trails, excuse me, yes, yes, thank you. Okay. The reason I was, I was, I've, I've been kind of leaning more towards option two, council, is, is because that ten percent for trails. And I'm like with you, Counselor Davis, where I'm a big fan of that, but, you know, you're still getting five percent there and you could review it. And so again, I'll go back to that, is that we, whichever one we, we push forth in a motion, I would ask that we consider having a, a one-year review, at least.
Yeah, I, I was just, I was going to make a motion to go with option one with the caveat that we revisit in, in twelve months.
So do it.
Sorry, making that motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Hang on a second here, excuse me. I just want to make sure I'm getting this right. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number fourteen fifty-four, inserting the citywide TIF rates, going with option one with an annual review, a one-year review. Is that correct?
In twelve months, yeah.
Yeah. Council, any further discussion? Seeing none. Let's see here, hang on a second. It is an ordinance, yes, so. Yes, Mr. Luigi, please read the ordinance into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance fourteen fifty-four, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, approving and updating transportation and capital facilities plan and transportation impact fee project list, adopting updated transportation impact fees and amending chapter eighteen point oh seven oh of the Richfield municipal code.
Great, thank you. And quick point of order, you were, the motion was supposed to come after you read that into the record. Are we okay?
We're good, yes.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion, council? If not, Mr. Luigi, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Favella?
Aye.
Councilmember Wells?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkle?
No.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Chipman?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye. Thank you, council. Motion carries.
And thank you. This is, I know this has been a really tough topic. It's some really significant changes. It's also my last item that I'm bringing to you, so I appreciate the conversation and appreciate the opportunity to take it to you.
Thank you. You gave us a doozy for the last one, going out with a bang. We got it done, though. Thank you. Okay, our next item of business is, or, our second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, the twenty-twenty-five budget amendments. Mr. Johnson, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and concerned citizens. So again, this is second reading, so I'm not going to go through the entire list. We went through that pretty in-depth at the last meeting. So I'm just going to jump to, first off, just a second, let me see which one I want to go to. We're going to go near the end, Julie, to slide eleven. And with that, I just want to go over where we're at with the net changes, what's carry forward, what's new requests. So the net changes are seven million, two-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred in expense appropriations with revenue at two million, eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Of that, the carry forward amount, and by carry forward, what this means is, council did approve this in the twenty-twenty-four budget. We did not progress quite as far as we thought we would in twenty-twenty-four. We have additional funding and commitments from that to carry forward into twenty-twenty-five, to finish out those particular projects. The carry forward would be three million, six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, seven-hundred dollars, with the revenue amount for that one million, nine-hundred-and-seven-thousand, five-hundred. New requests are three million, five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, with an additional new revenue request of nine-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety. Of that total seven-point-two million in requests for this budget amendment, twenty thousand is ongoing. The rest of it is one-time capital-type requests. So if we go on to the next, actually slide thirteen, we'll talk about fund balance impact, as that was a point of conversation at the last meeting. So general fund, the fund balance impact is one million, nineteen thousand, eight-hundred. That puts our ending fund balance at just over three-point-seven million. Our policy reserves do call for just under four-point-two million, so you would be dipping into policy reserves. There is one particular project in this, the splash pad, which is one-point-five million. We don't know, this is kind of a placeholder to put the funding in there if the city does have to do the demolition and repair on that. And that would come from the most reasonable area of the policy reserves to come from is the capital reserve that we set aside for capital repair and replacement. Next fund impact is real estate excise tax. That's one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten. That's to purchase the two properties for the potential intersection changes at Pioneer and Hillhurst. That would put the ending fund balance at just under one-point-nine million. Our policy reserve that council approved for this year is two-point-three million, so it would use some of that. Council has given some direction to look at what would we do with one of those properties in the future and potentially resell that after carving off the piece that we need and recouping that money to put back into the reserves. Next one is park impact fees, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. That is the portion that we would have spent in twenty-twenty-four for the purchase of Greeley Park. That's just carrying it over instead of two payments on that park property purchase. It would all go in as one payment, and we did close earlier this year on that. The next one I'll really mention, our next two, which are a little bit larger, is the water system development charge, just under one-point-five million in fund balance impact. That puts our ending fund balance at about seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. And that would add to a couple of the existing projects that we do have going on in the water product, water department. And then finally, the equipment replacement fund, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. That's carrying forward the purchase mainly of four patrol vehicles that we ordered clear back in twenty-twenty-three, and we finally received this year. And those have been received, and we do have them, I believe, three of the four right now. The, the fourth one is getting outfitted. Is that correct?
Thanks.
So the only, I guess the only other thing I'd like to point out is the building impermitting, you're going to see some red there, nineteen thousand, five-hundred. That was to finish up that cost-of-service study that we finished earlier this year. We did expect to finish that in twenty-twenty-four, with getting a consultant on pretty late that carried over into this year. And then council approved that study earlier this year. That shows that we would dip into the negative in that particular fund, but we're already working on rectifying that. And we've got a plan going forward to build those reserves up over the next three to five years. So with that, I would answer any questions that you have on the budget amendment.
Great, okay. Council, questions on anything that Mr. Johnson presented? My question is really about dipping into policy reserves, and like you, you just said where you ended. That's kind of where I was going to ask the question, was what, what is the plan? And what is the, what is the timeline for which we build up each of these, these policy reserves back to their minimum balance again?
So there's a couple of different answers to that. We're preparing for the budget for twenty-twenty-six, so it partly depends on what we decide to do with twenty-twenty-six. Right now, if we do what I had mentioned with that second property, we will build back into the, you know, cover the policy reserves probably pretty much immediately. And then it'd be pending what happens with next year's budget. With the real estate excise tax, that would take care of that one. For general fund, what we would look at, that goes on the revenue projections of next year. Typically, what we do is, most of these, we set up a plan, depending on the percentage that we dip into reserves, we set up a plan for anywhere from one to five years to replenish those reserves. Now, I do want to point out, with our reserves, though, specifically general fund, we are reserved more than industry standards. This is something that council put in place, starting first in two thousand and fourteen, and then increasing the reserve level over the next four years through two thousand and eighteen, so that we could be prepared for this transition that we're currently in. So when you look at, at what the normal industry is, we're more than double what our reserves are in there. We are a small city, so, you know, there's a relative amount there, but we are well-reserved even with dipping into the reserves there.
Great, yes. And with, with all the new commercial businesses coming online here in, in the near future, I mean, is it, it's anticipated that, that accelerated, are we on pace there? You know, or is, or like, where, where are we kind of at, where we forecasted, I think, a year or two ago?
We're, well, compared to a year or two ago, I think we're a little bit ahead.
Good.
If you compare to what the forecast was for this year, as we approved this year's budget, what I forecast for retail sales tax was a twenty percent increase. If you compare to what the forecast was for this year, as we approved this year's budget, what I forecast for retail sales tax was a 20% increase, we're at a little over 17% right now, and we do still have some businesses coming on that I had hoped would be open a little bit sooner, we have a few that are opening over the next month or so. What I forecast right now initially is another 5% increase next year, now, if you look at what's in the papers here recently for some of the other cities, their sales tax are going down. We still continue to see that increase. So, with all the commercial that's coming on, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna see at least a two and a half to 5% increase over the next five years.
Great, yeah, and that's the part where I think we're, counsel, I think I'm, I'm comfortable dipping into policy reserves to get there. Okay, counsel, any other questions or discussion to be had right now? If not, I would accept the motion on this item.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1455 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1455 as presented, counsel, any remaining discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, oh wait.
Mayor?
Yeah, I got you, I got you, Ms. Julie, sorry, I got you again.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the ordinance, ordinance number 1455, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, amending chapters number 1439 pertaining to the 2025 budget.
Great, thank you. No other discussion, would you please also call a roll?
Yeah. Counsel member Hamilton?
Aye.
Counsel member Burkle?
Aye.
Counsel member Wells?
Aye.
Counsel member Favela?
Aye.
Counsel member Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Chipman?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye, thank you, counsel, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the approval of resolution number 667, the master fee schedule update, Mr. Johnson, back over to you.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and counsel, so typically, we don't come to council to do any updates to the master fee schedule more than once per year, we did do that earlier this year when we finished up the cost of service study, but that was a large project that had been planned for well over a year. What we have tonight is really a couple of fees that have, they're statutory in nature, or they're things that are new to the city, and then one specifically that you talked about earlier tonight, so on slide two, we're gonna talk about the traffic impact fees while it's fresh in everyone's mind. So, what you see on the screen are the changes in the citywide area, we did add a clarification that that is citywide area, so that covers the entire TIF district, which is the city jurisdiction. So, the fee was to be determined per ordinance number 1454, and what was approved was option one, so we would put in the numbers for option one into that particular citywide area. The next two are both new fees, those are the different overlays for G Creek Plateau and the Cardi Road subarea, those are specific only to those areas, they could only, whatever funding comes in can only be spent in those areas, whereas a citywide area, even that portion that's part of the Cardi Road, G Creek subarea, could be used anywhere in the city. So, just that clarification, citywide means the entire jurisdiction, G Creek Plateau and Cardi Road subarea are specific to those areas and could only be used in those areas. We only have one other traffic impact fee in the city that's segregated to a certain area, and that was the development agreement with the Union Ridge area for all of the credits that we issued, and that was back about four or five years ago, where we issued for Union Ridge for some improvements that they made, and they can only be used in the Union Ridge commercial area. So, if we go on to the next one, this is a new fee, as we brought on the community space at the TMI building, we have an hourly rate for any rentals that we're doing there, city partner applications may receive a reduced or waived fee per our city partner policies. So, that just puts it into the fee schedule what the cost is per hour and a cleaning fee and deposit, this is similar to what we've been doing in other areas, and actually has already been in use since we started renting out that facility. So, and finally, we have some of the police department fees, the first one is for the body worn and in-car car camera recording preparation, so this is a statutory fee, this is what we can charge as we're preparing to bring those cameras online, we need to make sure we got that into the fee schedule for anybody who's requesting through public records any of that footage. Then the next one is in the dog licenses area, we have two new fees for the same thing, dangerous dog license for an initial fee, and then for the annual renewal fee as well, this is something we have not had in the past and has been requested by the police department and code enforcement. And then some clarifications on hobby kennels and commercial kennels for an annual fee, and with hobby kennels, changing it from five to 10 dogs to four to 10 dogs, and then setting up the $25 per dog for the hobby kennel, for commercial kennel, it was just showing that it is an annual fee, which is what we have been doing, just making sure it's clearer in the fee schedule. With that, that is all of the fee changes that we do have for your consideration.
Great, okay, counsel, well, do questions and comments right now, we'll go to Counselor Favela first.
Yeah, I don't know if you'll be able to answer these specific questions, but it is related to the dog licenses. If someone owns four dogs, do they automatically have to apply for a hobby license, or do they just get to keep their four puppies?
I don't believe it's.
I don't know to the answer to that, but we can certainly find that out and get back to you.
Thank you, and my next question was, what is, how do we classify a dangerous dog? What, and are we doing breed restrictions?
I'm not aware of any breed restrictions, and it typically, to be classified as a dangerous dog, it would be bite history.
By who?
By the city, by the code enforcement.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, can you help me understand how, like, would police be involved in that, a veterinarian clinic?
For bite history, it would be police for bite history here, how many times have we been out there, have they had a previous bite history, do they have a current one now?
Okay, cool, thank you.
Great, okay, Counselor Davis.
And I guess just to piggyback on that, so the fact that we're assigning the fee to that is just recognizing that you have a dog that makes, so we have to come out a lot-ish?
Correct, yes, I mean, typically, we would have been out there already and done an investigation to declare the bite, and then if that does expend more resources, plus hearings and those types of things.
Okay.
This is really ancillary, but, I mean, why go from five dogs to four dogs in that, in that span?
I believe that was requested by the code enforcement for being a little bit more consistent with other entities, but I can.
Yeah, it looks like Ms. Lust hasn't answered there too, yeah.
Yeah, the definition of a hobby kennel is four to 10 dogs, so that five was basically a typo, sort of the short story there.
So, this is now the more accurate number, this is, okay.
It is now the more accurate number.
I didn't know if we were really hard up for the extra 25 bucks to, you know.
No, I think we had a funky situation in the code that we're separately going to address through
Okay.
the next round of code updates, where it was like one to three and then five to 10.
Oh.
There was no four, and then the definition of hobby kennel says four, so it made sense to be consistent with that.
Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Lust, I appreciate the clarification, Counselor Favela.
All right, I just have one more follow-up, when we inquire about the hobby kennels, how do we let people know that if they have more than four animals, they may need to apply for a hobby license, and what is the, the fee, or, like, if you get a citation for not having a hobby license and you have that many, like, more than four animals at your house, what is, what does that look like?
So, to the second part of your question, it's specifically for dogs, not animals in general, as with any enforcement, it is complaint-based, and it would follow the same procedure as any other code enforcement case, so initial warning, second warning, and then fine, starting at the, the base amount in the fee schedule.
Great, looks like there's no other questions or comments, counsel, if you were good to move forward, then I would accept a motion on this one.
So, Mayor, if I may, I just want to kinda add to how the recommended action or motion in the staff report is, it says I move to adopt resolution number 667 as presented, then to include traffic impact fee option one adopted through ordinance number 1454 to make sure we're clarifying.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, that's a good point, so whoever makes a motion, have at it, yeah, please include that.
I got you, I move to adopt resolution number 667 as presented to include the updated traffic impact fee schedule with option one as listed in ordinance number 1454.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 667 as presented, and to include option one for the transportation impact fee schedule under ordinance number 1454. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, counsel, motion carries. And then, moving on to, whoa, no, we have more here. We're moving over to Greeley Farms, phase 2B final plot, Ms. Lust.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council members of the public, the item before you this evening is a final plot for phase 2B of the Greeley Farms planned unit development, the proposal is for 57 single-family residential lots. So, as you can see before you, phase 2B is kind of the northwestern portion of the Greeley Farms planned unit development, this is a planned unit development that was master-planned through a development agreement back in, I believe, 2017, and then subsequently, to that development agreement, each phase of the project has come forth through the planned unit development process, through approval by the hearing examiner, and then to council for final plot approval, so phase 2B is the latest to go through this process, next slide, please. All right, this shows the plot itself, a larger version of which is in your packet, as I mentioned just now, it's 57 single-family detached residential lots, the lot areas range from 4,658 square feet up to 12,542 square feet, which is consistent with the development agreement and the preliminary plot. As you can see, the larger lots are oriented to the north and east, towards the existing Helen's View neighborhood, with the smaller lots towards the south and west, adjacent to other phases of Greeley Farms, as well as the external street there. In addition to the residential lots, there is a large, about 4.75 acre open space track between those northern lots and the existing Helen's View neighborhood to the east, that tract has an existing gravel road in it that is used for access to a stormwater pond to the south, is also, you know, usable to pedestrians moving throughout the development, and then that track also has some wetland mitigation planting areas in it. The image on the right side of the screen kinda shows again where, where the plot is oriented in relationship to the rest of the development and the, the neighboring residences, so you can kinda see how coming off the southeast corner of phase 2B, you connect into some of those larger park and open space parcels that are part of the Greeley Farms overall project. All right, so as usual with final plots, they go through a staff review, we are doing a survey review, engineering review, and land use review of the plot at the staff level. All comments addressed, they're able to come before council, the applicant did submit a performance bond for 120% of the cost of incomplete public improvements, which for this project was $123,768.26. In the staff report, that was written up as a condition of approval due prior to obtaining city signatures on the MYLR, the applicant has submitted that performance bond in the stated amount, so that condition of approval has been pre-satisfied. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it back to you, Mayor, for any questions or comments from the council, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lust, okay, counsel, any questions or comments on this? Looks like there is, just out of curiosity, because we brought this up under the 1454, does, I don't expect you to know it off the top of your head, but would this DA be subject to increased impact fees like we approved, or would they have to, or have they have somebody built in, like they did in Heights?
This development agreement does not have a pre-existing surcharge, a per-lot surcharge for traffic impact fees, so, and it's, this is also outside of either of those special TIF districts, so when building permits for individual lots come in for phase 2B of Greeley Farms, they will vest to the citywide base rate in effect at that time.
Yeah, I was just curious, as we were looking at these, okay, thank you. No further discussion or questions, seeing none, I don't intend a motion, counsel.
I make a motion that we approve the Greeley Farms phase 2B final plot as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Greeley Farms phase 2B final plot as presented, any additional discussion, counsel, seeing none, I'll call a motion, uh, call a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, counsel, motion carries. Okay, we have one more item of business tonight, thanks for bearing with us, this is the second reading of ordinance number 1456, amending the Ridgefield municipal code 2.12.030, this is the planning commission qualifications, Ms. Notenares.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, this is a second reading of this ordinance, and there are no changes since the first reading, so just to summarize very quickly, to qualify to be a member of the planning commission under Ridgefield municipal code, you are required to be a resident of the city of Ridgefield and live within the Ridgefield city limits, the proposal before you today would change the qualification requirements so that one, up to one member of the planning commission can live within the urban growth area, and that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
That's great, okay, counsel, we've seen this a couple of times, this came out of our retreat, one of the initiatives, and so should be pretty straightforward, any questions or comments at this point? Okay, I think it's a good move, I'm looking forward to having somebody from outside the city limits considered in the future, so with that, Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Thank you, ordinance number 1456, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, amending rules related to qualification requirements for members of the Richfield Planning Commission.
Great, thank you, I would ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 1456 as presented.
Second.
Great, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1456 as presented. If there's no further discussion, then Ms. Julie, would you please call a roll?
Counsel member Davis?
Aye.
Counsel member Favela?
Aye.
Counsel member Wells?
Aye.
Counsel member Burkle?
Aye.
Counsel member Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Chipman?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye, thank you, and the motion carries, sounds good, all right, we're gonna move to public comment, anyone wishing to address city council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time to the podium, to use the raise hand feature located on this toolbar at the bottom of your screen, for controls over the phone, press star nine for raise your hand, and press star six to mute or unmute, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes, Mr. Jennings, good to see you, sir.
My name is Michael Jennings, and I want to thank you again for your carefully, carefully logical management of Ridgefield.
Thank you, always appreciated. Anybody else here wishing to give public comment, Mr. Thalberg, we'll go to you, sir.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, you asked about the Blue Root, the Blue Root is on, on the map, we don't wanna utilize the Blue Root as it's written, and the Blue Root from I-5, Blue Root only goes to northwest 11th, and so it's only a quarter of a mile or so, and then it goes north, okay, I hope that clarifies that for you, you'll see, know my role in the past, I worked role in the past. I worked with the Clark County Council. I actually drafted the letter last year and this year that went to the state legislature, and unfortunately, it didn't get passed. But then again, with the budget, that really wasn't surprising. So we're hopeful that in the future it'll work. Next thing, I hope the council recognizes the hard work that Mr. Green has done for your city, and he's had a lot of major projects that have been completed lately, and other major projects that are very near completion. And he has a long-term vision of what the Ridgefield area should look like, and both north-south routes go in the Discovery Drive, the I-5 exit, of course, the Pioneer Street and other things. So I hope that you can take some time. I think this will be his last visit before to your council, that you can recognize him for that. Thank you.
Thank you again. Is there anybody else wishing to give public comment this evening? Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing one online here.
We will close public comment, and we'll go to council and staff reports. I'm going to start at my far right this time, and we'll go, let's do, since we went a little long tonight, counsel, so give me your top one, maybe two, if you have a second quick one. But Counselor Davis, over to you.
Yeah, I'll go, I guess my top one was going to the groundbreaking for the school district's third elementary school. Boy, that, obviously, we all know that's a long time coming, but it was just really, really rewarding to see the community come together and celebrate, you know, what is going to be a big addition to our community. And I'm excited to see kind of a nice focal point for the east side as well. And Mayor Protem, you did a fantastic job on your speech.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Counselor Favela.
Yes. My big one I want to share is I did the Cressa tour with some other city council members from other parts of Clark County, and I would really encourage my fellow council members to complete that tour. Our dispatchers for 911 are the literal unseen partner for our law enforcement and fire. They're there anticipating needs for our officers, listening to people when they call in, supporting them until help is there. And I just think we don't give them the credit that they deserve, along with, you know, when we, we always celebrate law enforcement, our officers out there, our firefighters, but there are the dispatchers as well. And they do a ton of other emergency services, and they're just a phenomenal partner. So I got a challenge coin, and that was super awesome, but I would really encourage you all to do that. And, Mr. Green, it is your very last meeting, and I have to be honest, that for the longest time, I paid attention to speed limit signs because I didn't want to get pulled over. And now I pay attention to speed limit signs because I truly think, would Mr. Green think I'm going too fast right now? I appreciate everything that you've done. I have appreciated your welcomeness when I came to council, meeting you in your office, and just truly being there to answer any question at any time, and your very thorough report outs. You retiring is a huge thing for you, but a huge loss for the city at the same time, so it's very bittersweet. And congratulations on your new endeavor. You will be missed, and there are some majorly large shoes to fill.
For sure, for sure. Thank you. And just a second, you on that Cressa tour, it's powerful if you ever get a chance to do it. I highly recommend it just because it's, you don't realize what goes into an operation like that. Counselor Wells, over to you, sir.
You told us, make it short. I went to several meetings. Now, I do have something I want to report, and it's on the Discovery Clean Water Alliance. I was at the meeting last Friday for a two-hour meeting, and there were several issues that were brought up, and I would like to report on them. And one of them is our wastewater going out of the treatment plant in July, August, and September is above our allowed temperature. So we may be looking, Clark Regional may be looking at some other issues that they got to take care of, possibly putting in a cooling system, a refrigerator to cool the water before it goes into Lake River. That's, that's one of the things. Another product that came up, Sue Marshall is on the board of directors also, and she stated that the county is not meeting the deadline for the comp plan, will not be meeting the deadline. So I don't know, we know that, they've been talking, they may not, but she did state that they won't be doing that. The other thing is with procuring products, and I say products is like pumps and that, there are no companies in the United States that builds one of the pumps they need, and that's one of the requirements of the federal government. It has to be built in the U.S., and you have to buy U.S. They're trying to get a waiver of that, but we did go with another option, and I say we as part of the board, that we may have to wait two years to get the pump. There's supposed to be a new factory being built in the United States that can supply that product. Try and go with Plan A first, but we're using Plan B as a backup. And I guess the other one is relocation cost for Forest Main for Battleground. They're having to put in a stormwater pipe, and stormwater runs by gravity. And their new gravity line, and I believe it's Eden Boulevard, don't quote me on that one, but the gravity line runs into their Forest Main sewer, and they're going to have to relocate their sewer because you can't relocate the gravity. The gravity's taking precedence over that. So that's another expense that Battleground's going to be coming up with. Okay, that's all. I had so many things.
All right, thank you, counselor. Counselor Burkle.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I'm involved with the Green Bag Food Project, and a week ago Saturday, we collected 8,700 pounds of fresh wholesome food, as well $2,000 in cash, which we will use to buy more food. And the food we collect goes between the School Resource Center and Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Just a comment, people look at Ridgefield, and I think they go affluent. We have, on average, and I think Manager Protem will back me on this, I think last week, what did you have, 70?
Seventy.
Seventy clients come through Neighbors Helping Neighbors for food, and that's beginning to be a weekly number, but rather remarkable. The other thing, the groundbreaking for the grade school was absolutely amazing. I had no idea in the world we'd have that many people show up. It was terrific. And the last thing was our ribbon cutting yesterday for another new business in Ridgefield, and God bless them, I'm so pleased to go to ribbon cuttings because it's just another new business in Ridgefield, and they offer a marvelous service of bicycles, electric bikes, and conventional. And Mr. Green, just thank you very, very much for everything you've done for Ridgefield. It's truly remarkable and appreciated. Just one thing, remember, when you're retired, nobody will give a darn about anything you talk about, think about, or want them to know, because you will be retired.
They'll actually just blame me for all the stuff I did while I was here.
Oh, that was Chuck, yeah. Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. I will keep this short and sweet. I went to the groundbreaking as well, was super impressed. I thought, wow, what an exciting thing to have our first elementary school since 1961. And then, in the interest of keeping things short, I just want to thank you, Mr. Green, in the very short time that I've been here. I've been thoroughly impressed by you, and I think hitting retirement and being able to look back at the legacy and look around and see the tangible things that you have actually put into our community is a pretty cool thing. And I want to say thank you for your service and everything that you've given our city, and you will be missed.
Great, thank you, counselor. Counselor Wells, did you want to jump in real quick?
Yeah, I do. I forgot to mention anything about Mr. Green. This is a little roast. No, I'm not going to, no, I'm not going to roast him. It's been a pleasure working with you, Chuck, for over 20 years. When you were just a consultant that came to the city with, was it Greg Winteroute, the planning department?
It was, I was with Parsons Sprinkerhop, but the planner was Eric Eisenman at that time.
But over the years, you've been impeccable, the work that you've done and what you've helped the city, even when you weren't working for the city, you'd come in and pitch in to turn it around and help solve some of the problems.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, for, if those of you that don't know, if there's anyone here that doesn't know, Mr. Green was the one who actually built the Rourke for us, was the one who managed building the Rourke for us, which I think is one of the most beautiful, you know, facilities of any place in the northwestern that I've been, as far as baseball fields and the whole system is just absolutely gorgeous. So I think it's amazing that he was not able to be replaced. I mean, we interviewed all these people, and we couldn't find anybody to replace him. What does that tell you about somebody? Chuck, you've just done a fabulous job. So, thank you very much. I think you are irreplaceable, so I think that we've proven that. And you brought a professional level to this, to this city and to this team that surpassed what we had had in the past, and the way that you've managed these projects. You've just done a fabulous job. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And last for me, I'll try and keep it short as well. You know, always lots happening here. I had the privilege, actually, the other day of going on a farm tour, and I, we've been doing a lot of this comprehensive plan stuff, and we're looking at our land use alternatives and all of that, you know, and I think that sometimes, you know, this council maybe has gotten a bad rap in saying, hey, all we want to do is just tear down all the farms and build over them, and, you know, and I think that couldn't be further from the case. I think we actually have a farmer sitting on the council here who would probably say that that's not what we're trying to do. But it was also good to be able to go on a farm tour and just see real life, like a real-life working farm in action. I was there with the Garden Club and the Gleaners Club, and Red Truck Farms hosted us and took us around, and I just did just a little bit of research. But, you know, small farms make up 80%, over 80% of all farms in Washington State. So that's a huge, huge driver for our local food production, our local economy, and they provide critical support in food production, and, you know, even to low and moderate, moderate-income families. In fact, the Gleaners were there because they benefit from, from the food and food output that these farms, these small farms do, and they turn around and they donate it to things like the Family Resource Center, and we're providing not just food, but guys, good food, good food to kids and families who needs it. So it was really kind of cool to see that. And I know that small farms are dwindling here in Washington, but it was really still a good experience to see that. And, you know, I think that we do need to do our efforts to preserve existing farms where we can. We also have the job of making sure that we manage growth within our city, too. So we straddle that delicate balance, but that doesn't mean that we alienate farms in the process. So it was just really kind of a cool experience. And then lastly, just, Mr. Green, I know that everyone else has said something, too. I'll go ahead and say my piece, and we'll have a more of a chance to do it. I just want to acknowledge your contribution to the city. I was trying to think, was it two or three years ago when you joined in this capacity of Public Works Director? But it feels much longer than that because of the far and wide-reaching impact you've had, I think, on the city, its growth, its development, how it's been managed. And I remember the last time we were looking for a Public Works Director, there was, we had, again, candidates that we looked at, and just didn't feel like we got any good candidates, and I think we all kind of walked away from that, staff walked away from that, and feeling like, okay, well, we need to do something. And then here comes Chuck out of the woodwork. And you came, and I remember, I got, I got actually really excited when I heard that because I, you know, we had gone through a couple of hiccups with some of our projects, and from what I knew of you, I knew that we were in good hands. And we've been in good hands, and you've taken great care of the city, and you just deserve every bit of fulfillment, travel enjoyment in your retirement as you go over to that next phase of life. But we hope we will still continue to see you. I know that you are very civically involved, and so I'm sure we'll see you around. But thank you, sir, very much, from the bottom of all our hearts, for your contribution to the city. It's meaningful. So, thanks. And before I go over to staff, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I wanted to be able to do my joke.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I did post a traffic planning dad joke. And it was, "The roundabout is the most circular conversation in town."
That, that was worse than a dad joke. That was an engineering joke.
You really got to be deep in the weeds on that one.
God have mercy on you, sir.
Yeah, I was like, well, I can't bypass the one I found about a roundabout, so anyways, yeah. I will miss the commentary from Mr. Green.
Okay, great. Ms. Notenares, we'll go to you.
Just a quick reminder that we have an event coming up next week, the Fourth of July. Yes, it is next week. And actually, it is almost three-day event. So, street dance on the third, and also the chair placing that doesn't begin until 6:00 p.m. in preparation for the Fourth of July. There is a fun run and a parade, and then the day after that is the first Saturday of the month, and that will feature all of the vendors, and the primary activity is a car show.
Great.
And that's all I got.
Exciting stuff. Okay, great. Ms. Green, I'm going to skip you. I'm going to go to Mr. Thamer first. You can go last tonight, so.
Just have one update for you. I wanted to update you on the water conservation strategy. Over the last several weeks, multiple city departments have been working together, utility billing, our communications team, and our water utility team, to implement the plan that was approved. And I can report that last week, we worked with the HOAs in Ridgefield and have received quite a bit of support from the HOAs. Some HOAs have even sent out letters supporting the city in this effort. And also, we have been receiving a lot of questions, which we didn't know what to expect, but many of the questions we've been receiving have been people asking how they can help and not opposing what's going on, but really trying to help and participate. So effective today, the conservation strategy went into effect, and because we are at, or over 2.75 million gallons of production each day, we are at stage three. So we'll keep monitoring it from there, and hopefully we can keep the numbers down as much as we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the work you guys are doing as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, necessary. Okay, Mr. Johnson, oh, one question.
At that point, do we do mitigating stuff on our end, on the city side, with like adjusting watering or anything like that?
Yes, we have already, actually, we're not quite done. We have about half of the parks have already been adjusted to a modified watering schedule, and probably by Wednesday afternoon, we'll, we'll have the rest of them completed.
Cool, thank you. Great. Okay, any other questions for PW? Sounds good. Ms. Johnson, we'll go to you.
That's me. Since I'm not retiring, I'll defer my reports to a later meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Ms. Lust?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing to report, which is that we were able to get our planning update grant through the Department of Commerce fully reimbursed in recognition of the work we've accomplished so far on that project. So feels good to lock that one up, and now we're on to using another climate grant for climate planning and making lots of things sound like climate planning, so we can get our money's worth on that one, too. That's my update.
Great, thank you. Good to hear. Chief Doria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really have nothing to add, but I do want to say that I've enjoyed working with Chuck. I will say we came on at the same time, and speaking from behind the curtain, I don't think I've ever seen anybody work as hard as he does and is as committed as he is to what his expertise is. He's amazing to watch, and I've really enjoyed working with him.
Sounds good to hear. Yes, Ms. Burkle.
I just wanted to thank you, chief, for sharing the... I just wanted to thank you, chief, for sharing the numbers from the traffic impact, or whatever the appropriate phraseology is. Thanks for sharing those.
You bet.
Great. Ms. Parker, we'll go to you, ma'am.
Well, hello this evening. I hope everybody's doing well. I do not have anything to report, but I will just echo, I am gonna miss you terribly, Mr. Green. So I really enjoyed working with you. I'm sorry that we had to litigate so much, but enjoy your retirement, and you will be missed.
Great, thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Green, the floor is yours.
All right, the last word. I just want to follow up, because another aspect of my life was looking into, well, supporting agriculture. And as of 2022, Clark County's farms contributed almost $59 million worth to the Clark County economy, employed over 4,000 people. So there you go on that. I, I don't know what to say. I mean, it's, it's been a long, a long career, and I've, I've just been blessed to enjoy every minute of it. I have also been honored to have worked with all of you, with an amazing staff. I've worked with, in one way, shape, or form, probably worked with all the county, city, county, and town councils in Clark County, and by far, Ridgefield's is the best. You guys are all on the same page. You may not necessarily like all the speed limit proposals I have. At least you, you talked through it. But I, I just feel incredibly blessed to end my career on this level. And this is, this is where I've wanted to end my career is in Ridgefield, and have the opportunity to do it. You'll still see me around, we're still active with our church. I'll still show up for wetland plantings and probably come heckle you in some future council meeting.
We hope so.
As I wax nostalgic, I happen to look back at some of the things and find minutes from a Thursday, August 28, 2003 council meeting, where I was presenting the Transportation Capital Facilities Plan to Mayor Tim Thompson. Kathy's mom was on council at that time. And there was this citizen, Lee Wells, who gave me a hard time, and the minutes seemed to reflect that. But just want to note that that was the meeting where the capital facility plan, the TIFs, went to a daily trip rate. And we stayed that way ever since. And it was the first one, there was discussion about how do we connect South Ridgefield to the 219 interchange. And so I kind of reflect on that. I've had, you know, a good 20-plus years of working for the city in a variety of forms, and all those memories are precious. And I really just want to say farewell, but so long, I guess is a better way to put it, because you'll still see me around here, and I'll still, still contribute to the community in whatever way I can. But thank you very much.
Thank you again. And with that last word, council, this meeting is adjourned.
I'm done.
I couldn't hear what he said, but he said my name in vain, did he?[1798.52]